Good evening, and I call to order the March twenty second, two thousand and twenty-three City of Calabasas regularly scheduled council meeting. Tonight, I'm joined by my colleagues Mayor Pretend Weintraub, Council Members Albrecht, Bizagin, and Kraut, as well as our city manager, city attorney, and staff in a full house tonight, which is great. If you would like to provide public comment and are in person, please complete a speaker card in the back and give it to our city clerk sitting right over here. If you're joining us via Zoom, please press raise hand or star nine if you're joining via phone, and if star six to unmute yourself when the item you'd like to comment on is presented. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for all communication public comment. When you're called to speak, please state your name and the city you live in. You will be allowed up to three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of our council. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Girl Scout Brownie Troop seven zero one eight six.
Audience attention. Please stand for the presentation of the colors. Color Guard, attention. Color Guard, advance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. You don't. Yeah. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, Constitution, and its essence, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard, post the colors.
Color Guards salute their colors. Color Guard dismissed.
Now, that's a great way to start a meeting. And I don't know how it could possibly be made better. Maybe I do.
Wow, thank you. Thank you so. These are thin mints. Thank you. We'll see you later. No, we'll pass these over. We will share them.
As I make the offer every meeting, everyone who stays till the end gets a thin mint. Thank you, girls. Thank you, troop. Now we will move on to the presentation. Oh, actually, the presentation for the fire department has been rescheduled to March twenty ninth to our special council meeting. Also consent items numbers three and seven will be tabled for a future meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda with votes modifications?
Same.
We'll second that. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And none opposed, passes five zero. We met in closed session prior to this meeting. Does the city attorney have anything to report?
Yes, thinking Mr. Mayor, the city council met in closed session and considered three items. The conference of legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation related to a claim by the Los Angeles Unified School District. Second, an item of anticipated litigation related to facts and circumstances the city believes are not yet known to potential plaintiffs, but which may result in litigation. And third, council group property negotiator regarding two, three, zero, seven, five, Mahaland Highway, Calabasas, and the council provided direction to staff and council and took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And we will start now. We will move on to our very first positive, good, second, good item tonight. That is a presentation. And this one is, and why don't you come up to the podium while we go ahead and do this, read this for Zachary. This is to Zachary Davis for his work on the tech help program at the Senior Center, a fantastic program. The Senior Center offers a free weekly tech help program for seniors. Zachary started volunteering at the center in 2020. During that time, Zachary has proven to be an exceptional individual. As a sophomore in high school, Zachary transformed his personal interest in technology into valuable learning opportunities for seniors. By the start of 2022, Zachary's helpful and patient nature coupled with his love of technology caused a natural progression from tech help volunteer to taking on the reorganization and management of the entire program. Zachary provides a great service to the seniors by assisting them with problems they have had with technology and teaching them how to operate new iPhones, iPads, laptops, and computers. I'm going to see you later, hopefully. This program was especially essential to the seniors during the COVID-19 pandemic. Zachary is responsible for recruiting, training, and scheduling all tech help volunteers. When faced with the challenge of creating a sustainable pool of volunteers, Zachary created, organized, and chaired a new tech help club at Calabasas High School. Zachary has had thirty-six different student volunteers that have logged a total of two hundred and eighty-one tech help volunteer hours. Zachary ensures every volunteer is nonjudgmental and patient with the seniors, and he also makes sure all seniors receive personal attention. In addition to the tech help program, Zachary regularly creates and instructs technology-related classes such as navigating modern technology to stay connected with younger generations, combating scams, pyramid schemes, internet deception, the modern age, effectively navigating the internet, how to use Google Search to find any information and TV streaming services. Zachary, we appreciate all of your efforts and countless hours on this very important program. Congratulations, Zachary, and I'll be down in one sec. Are there any council comments? Mayor Pretend Weintraub.
Congratulations for being recognized tonight. It's so well deserved for the work that you do, and I know it benefits so many people, and I know you contribute a lot more than just this. So congratulations on Model UN. I think you'll be back for that recognition, but we're so proud of you and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Any of my, anyone else? Councilmember Albrecht, go ahead. I'm sorry you were reaching.
Zachary, we haven't met before, but I know your grandparents very well and a good stock. And I've been on that program myself many, many times. And tech help has a beginning, but it never has an end because things are changing so rapidly and so quickly. So I just applaud you for following in your grandmother's footsteps and keeping our services over the tech for the tech area at the Senior Center alive and well. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kraut. Well, thank you. It's all been said, but I just want to also weigh in and congratulate you on this recognition and say thank you for what a wonderful job that you're doing. Because when you find a way that you can give back to your community like you have with a special skill that you have, and you find a group of people that need something that you can offer, that's just the example of what we want to be in society and how our communities should always function. And to see somebody at your age already having figured that out and donating his his time and efforts to the extent that you do, I'm just really impressed.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Bizagin.
Yes, I too wanted to congratulate and thank you. I'm aware of the work you've done there, and I hear it from many people, including your very proud grandparents.
And again, congratulations. I'll come down. We have a certificate. And if you're, I'm sorry. Okay, before we do that, please, I want to say something. I just want to congratulate you personally and your family that's all here. It's a big, big help, and I really look forward to getting all that help from you. No joke.
Thank you very much for the kind comments. I want to thank the city council for having me here tonight. First, I want to thank the hardworking people at the Senior Center. Without the work they put in day in, day out, and the belief they've had in me since the beginning, none of this would have been possible. I additionally want to thank all of my fellow student volunteers for dedicating their time and effort and remaining patient, and what I can ensure all of you is a very difficult task. These volunteers give up their time every week out of their busy schedules to give back to the community they love most. And finally, I want to thank the seniors for being very willing to learn and showing up weekend and week out. Through this experience, my fellow student volunteers and I have learned many valuable life lessons from a variety of very interesting people and allowing, that allows us to be both teachers and students at the same time. I also, once, once again, would like to thank the city council. And I want to end off by saying that if anyone here needs help solving any technological-related issue, please feel free to stop by the Senior Center every Wednesday from four.
Congratulations.
Let's all go down and take a picture.
Next, we have another presentation. I'm standing down here. We'll all come down a little bit for another picture. But it's, it's an honor tonight and privilege for our city to recognize the girls, Calabasas High School Girls Water Polo Team.
All along here, they're all good.
And their coach, Andrew Nathan, Nathan, I apologize, Anthony. Want to bring him up? And the certificate says for your extraordinary achievements and contributions as coach to the Calabasas High School Girls Water Polo Team, who for the first time in over a decade made it a playoff, so we're Calabasas proud. So congratulations. And and we're going to go and tell you one by one, have a certificate, and then please come up and stand here so we'll take a picture afterwards. All I know is I used to try doing egg beaters, and I lasted a second till I held on to the side. So congratulations to all of you. Really a big accomplishment. Abby Shapiro. I could have got that last name.
Hopefully. Well, I can do that.
Taylor Cradle. Jessica Danny. Julia Kramer. And this is a shout out for Sophia Damian, who's over Zoom. Ria Corday. Savannah Morgan. Caitlin Mulligan. Victoria Iwanu. Alana Minufar. Alma Hawamaduma. I just want to say how incredibly proud I am to be able to coach this amazing group of young women, really risen to the occasion and tried to change the culture at Calabasas High School for the better. So thank you for allowing me to be your coach. Congratulations. How many, how many seniors? Are you going to play around tomorrow next year?
I'm going to BYU.
Congratulations. Go Cougars, right? Awesome. So you'll have, you'll have that next year? All except for one. Wow, you'll dominate next year, right? We look forward to seeing you next year. Well, congratulations to all of you. Great job. And let's all come down and take a picture together with council, please, and you too. And I know as much as you love the meeting and thin mints, you're welcome to, to go at any time if you need to, to get back to study or practice. Okay, we have, we'll move on to have there any members of the public who wish to speak on that last item? My apologies.
No, Mr. Mayor, no members of the public.
All right. And while they're leaving, we will move on to our fantastic Deputy De Mateo from the Sheriff's Department to present reports. Please, welcome. Thank you. We'll give it a minute. Nobody wants thin mints except the loyal three or four who are here.
All right. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm going to be presenting the crime reports for the months of January and February of this year. In the interest of time-saving, I will be doing them combined. There were thirty-three part one crimes in January and twenty-one part one crimes in February for a total of fifty-one, or excuse me, fifty-four part one crimes. During these months, there was one rape. This incident occurred between an ex-dating couple during a child visitation. Further information about this incident is not available at this time. The incident is being investigated by the Sheriff's Special Victims Bureau. There were two armed robberies. One incident occurred at a restaurant, a restaurant on Calabasas Road at approximately five forty in the morning. An employer arrived to open the restaurant and was met by four burglary suspects already inside. The suspects forced the employee to the ground and threatened to shoot him if he moved. The suspects then stole the employee's cell phone and car keys and left the location. The other incident occurred in a parking lot of a business also on Calabasas Road at approximately seven PM. The victim posted a designer watch for sale on the internet. The victim and the two suspects met in person to negotiate the sale of this watch. And one of the suspects attempted to snatch the watch from the victim. A struggle ensued, and the second suspect produced a firearm and pointed it at the victim. The victim was able to retain his watch and leave the area without further incident. There were three assaults. Each incident occurred between individuals that knew each other, where injuries were sustained during arguments. We did have seven residential burglaries. All seven burglaries occurred in the month of January. There were zero residential burglaries in February. Two commercial burglaries, seven vehicle burglaries, six grand thefts, ten petty thefts, twelve thefts from unlocked vehicles, and two felony domestic violence incidents. A majority are a good number of the thefts from vehicles were catalytic converters. This is something that we're starting to see increase again for some reason, and all the vehicles that the catalytic converters were stolen from were Priuses because the Priuses contain a good amount of precious metals. So we will be having an additional catalytic converter etching event. I don't know when, but we are trying to schedule one. In the meantime, I do recommend that car owners, specifically Prius owners, contact the dealership to see if they can get a catalytic converter cover installed on their vehicle to prevent this from happening further. That's all I have for the two months. Are there any questions, comments?
Thank you. Turn to council. Questions or comments? Mayor Pretend Weintraub.
Just thank you as always for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kraut. Deputy De Mateo, thank you for the report. Did you want to share with us anything about a meeting that occurred earlier this week with our faith community?
Ah, yeah. So we did have a, earlier this week, we did have a clergy meeting. This was numerous faith groups in our community met with Captain C two and members of the Community Relations Team, talked about concerns that these faith groups had and ways to improve security for their congregations and so forth. It was a very productive and constructive meeting, and we will be having another one this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other? Councilmember Albert.
Deputy, thank you very much for your report. I just want you to know, you go notice every single day we think of you. When I see a car go by, I'm always looking inside thinking it's going to be you. I know you guys patrol as hard as you can, and there's evidence that's showing I leveling out a little bit. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir.
And you, and you run with deputies as well.
Councilmember Bizagin.
No, I just want to thank you for the report.
Thank you.
And I'll say thank you for the report and thank everybody at the station for what they're doing. Keeping a safe question for you. Can you tell us a little bit about that catalytic converter cover CCC that, of how that effectively precludes someone from stealing?
So I'm not an expert on it, but I did do some, some research on it. You can buy products. It's usually steel plates that they install over that catalytic converter. Some, I don't know if it's an option for all vehicles. Mostly, I was looking at Toyota trucks and SUVs. There are options available. So I encourage everybody to specifically Prius owners to contact the dealership to see if that option's available. If there is, it's, it's between a hundred and three hundred bucks. It's not, it's nothing crazy, and it's well worth it.
Thank you very much, and thanks again. Be safe and appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam. Oh, well, before you leave, Madam Clerk, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, no comments.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to council announcements. We'll start with Mayor Pretend Weintraub.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I had a couple. Thank you. First, I'd like to ask that the staff for helping the lighting in our chapel. I don't know if they've got recognized or not, but we've had, I've had some friends telling me the lights were flickering. I said, I'll make it happen. I didn't have anything to do with it. They did it voluntarily, and we're more daylight than we were more, before we were more. I'm not sure what the lighting term is, but it's a little different lighting, and it's very soft. So thank you very, very much. I've been giving updates on the Mohawk Highway Lightning Project, and I'm going to continue to do that until we have.
Thank you. A parade when it's completed. Storms disrupted the construction activities, but the contractors starting to assess soil conditions so they can clear the remaining grading operations, wrecking the traffic signal poles, and resuming the, preparing the apron on the north retaining wall. So it's coming along pretty good, and we got a careful eye on it. It looks terrific. If you ever get a minute on a clear day to take a drive and see what's going on, it's massive. So it's a beautiful project, and I think it'll time in with a wild walnut when that's completed, and we'll have a wonderful corner there. And lastly, I attended a viewpoint diversity day. I was invited, and I was appreciated, wanted to become more familiar with an important component in our city. It was very good. If you've ever been to New York and went to an Off Broadway play, this was just that, except it was based on diversity. So I enjoyed it, and that's my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bizagin.
Uh, no, I do not have any announcements.
Okay, Councilmember Kraut.
Okay, I'll. Oh, he's got five. Well, I can take three then. All right. Want to make sure we're getting everything covered here tonight. First of all, somebody else I'm sure is going to get up and say something about this, but the Calabasas City Team is most likely going to win the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce Cal Cup Bowling Tournament this Friday night. I believe it's completely full already, but you can always check with the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce if you're interested in getting the team on board this late in the game. Also, this Saturday, from ten thirty to twelve thirty at Gates Canyon Park, there'll be an event for Brandon's Buddies. Brandon's Buddies is an inclusive community of people of all ages and all abilities and disabilities. And Brandon's Buddies has been gathering there for years. And one of the things that they're focusing on now is, is getting the community to help contribute additional funds so that the rebuild of Brandon's Village, which is necessitated for maintenance reasons, can be even more impressive than it already is today and even more than we already have budgeted for it. So that community is certainly pulling together, and I invite you all to come out and join. And then the last announcement I have is on April first, the City of Calabasas is hosting the Bunny Trail at De Anza Park. That's our Easter celebration that was birthed through COVID because we couldn't gather the way that we used to, and has turned into an extraordinary event all on its own. So that's at De Anza Park on April first. Come on and join us.
For a hop and good time, right? On that same day, April first, good news, and you may already know it, but the La La Land Kind Cafe opens at the Commons in Calabasas. So after you're on the bunny trail, you can run over and get some wonderful food from a wonderful place. Also, going on this week, it's already begun. Last night was opening night at Calabasas High School. The theater is, the theater and students are performing, singing in the rain. It runs through March twenty-fifth, and they promise there'll be no more rain through the rest of the run in the city. The, also running all the way through March twenty-sixth, Sunday, is our annual USTA Tennis Tournament at the Tennis and Swim Center. It's a great opportunity to go see some top professionals, young professionals. Sometimes you get some not so young, but the tennis is the same players you may see in August in the US Open or next year at some of the national other tournaments, the Big Four. Kids' Day is Saturday for the tennis tournament, eleven to twelve thirty. There'll be fun games, prizes at the tennis center, and it is free. I want to take a moment to congratulate our staff, who did a tremendous job from everything I'm aware of for both events on St. Patrick's Day, both at the Senior Center and also at the
For both events on St. Patrick's Day, both at the senior center and also at the the scavenger hunt throughout the city, as well as Arbor Day, which was a great event as well. And those are my announcements. Thank you very much. We'll move on to oral communication and public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Please present a speaker card. I have a couple ones on an item. And the first one I have is Mark Levinson. Welcome, Mark.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Again, first report, there's no way the chamber is going to lose that bowling tournament. I have it on good faith. We have.
I'm sorry, there must be something wrong with the sound.
We've hired ringers to appear. No, seriously. Thank you for putting forth a team to contribute. And as everyone knows and those listening, the proceeds go to scholarships for the students here in Calabasas. So it's a great event. You have fun. And it goes to a good cause. So thank you very much and I look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you very, very much. Who's on our team? Am I allowed to ask that? That's not a response. Councilmember Crowe? I believe our team is yourself. No, no, no. No, you're not gonna bowl with us? I can't. I am not allowed. Councilmember Albert?
The question is our team?
Our team. Councilmember Albert, myself.
And I know our other two.
And the other two would be?
Erica Green.
Erica Green?
Who I understand is a ringer.
All right.
Maybe we don't even have to show up, from what I hear. And, sorry, I don't know Bob's last name.
It's Jeff Campbell.
Jeff Campbell.
From the Henderson Swim Center.
Oh, Jeff Campbell. All right. Fantastic. I will be there to support you and I'm sure others will as well. And it's a great event for a great cause. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any other people online, individuals who'd like to speak on public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we have, I consent items left on the calendar. Items one, two, four, five and six. And I will say I'd like to pull five off for some comments and we have a public speaker card on five. Are there any other items council members would like to pull off?
I just had a comment on five too.
Okay, what number? Four. Four and five so far. Anything else? All right, why don't we go ahead to item number four. And ask Councilmember Crowe for your comments. Thank you for that. Item number four is an amendment to an existing agreement for burn specific construction to extend the term of their contract and extend the dollars of their contract. To provide additional emergency cleaning services. I have an issue with the way that these have been rolling out. And in particular, this, this particular contract, it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for emergency on-call services. Due to the rains and stuff, it's exceeded its contract value by thirty six thousand dollars so far. I think that is an unforeseeable emergency and certainly something that you know, we need to, to address here and, and approve the additional thirty six thousand in over expenditures. Adding nine months to the contract through November of twenty twenty four, I think is a bad idea. Adding nine months of the contract and a hundred and five thousand dollars would mean that the change order to this contract is larger than the original contract that was approved. I think if we're in a situation like that, we need to take this out to bid. And so my recommendation would be that we approve the thirty six thousand over expenditure that was unforeseeable because of the rain. And perhaps allow another thirty six thousand dollars for the next couple of months of potential rain. And ask staff to go back out to bid for this contract. I'd also recommend that the term of this contract should probably go from September to September. Because we have a contract here that terminates that ends in February. And as you can imagine, if you have a contract for emergency on-call services to clean drains and respond to to flood issues, they're probably just at their height in February and going to continue to march. So it would be more appropriate, I think, to have a contract that ran September to September. That would be my recommendation. Again, that would be thirty six thousand for what's currently over an additional thirty six thousand to get us through the next couple of months. And ask staff to go back out to bid for a regular annual contract. Okay, are there any other comments on that item or can we hear from the city manager? Or?
Our public works director, Robert Yal.
Well, I'm sorry, I've been out in the rain and we had a couple of unforeseen situation right now. We are dealing with a tree. Fell at the school district, the crews out there. I just rushed back. I agree with you, Councilmember Crowe. We can do that. Your recommendations are well received. The only caveat is that's the only contractor we have in this area who provide the services. And the amount is not to exceed. If you don't use it, it will stay in account. But with your recommendation, we are totally good. Since we have done a lot of preventive measure, the additional funding should be sufficient. We weren't expecting so much rain and we will go out to R F P, see who else is out there. We're gonna reach out, see if we can get more contracted to bet this job since on an hourly basis truckload, there is no performance of building something actually is removing a lot of mud and debris. We can do that. So I will thank you for your recommendation. We will follow on that and R F P will be prepared to go out after we clean up the entire mud and debris that we have in hand right now.
Great, and thank you for all your hard work and please extend our thank you to your entire staff. Is there anything further on this? Do you wish to, Councilmember Albert, questions to say?
I'd just like to make a general observation. Looking at the consent items from time to time, the companies that were asked to extend their contracts for various reasons. They seem to be the same starting lineup over and over. And there could be a lot of reasons for that and I'm sure staff looks at it very, very strongly. Based on quality, experience, recommendations, referrals and all of that. In reading the, the reports a little bit, the Ventura County Contractors Association was mentioned as well as L A contractors. Opportunities to seek out opportunities for the R F Ps, request for proposals. And you can only get what you can get. I, my business brought me into the Ventura County Contractors Association many years ago. For many years and I'm very familiar and friendly with the president. But nonetheless, there's people that are associated with that homework, that contractors association. Like copy people. And the reason I'm bringing this up, I would like to see us have more opportunity from other vendors to be solicited from. So the copy people like to make copies of plans. Sometimes they'll have to make seven or eight plans for a project and give them out their big copy, these special machines to make the the plan. So maybe I'll be happy to give you the name of it. I don't want to get pre-advertising from somebody, but those type of copy companies might be a good place to solicit vendors from. So maybe we can get more of a rounded additional vendors to make proposals and so.
Excellent comment. We do that. We have Dodgers Room. We have other companies that they assist us to solicit contract. But I would love to talk to you, get more additional name and do additional requests for proposals.
Thank you.
Any further comment?
No.
No further comment, but I did propose an amendment to that. I think I'm waiting on the second. Did I hear that a second was appropriate now or we needed to come back with it?
We, the council could approve it as adjusted, as requested by Councilmember Crowe tonight.
I will.
Adjustment down.
I will second that. Any further discussion? You want to call for vote? I would, yes. Should we do a roll call at this point or all in favor? Let's do it. All in favors indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you for that amendment.
Mr. Mayor, that was just number four, right?
Yeah, that was item number.
Thank you.
Just taking out order so, because there is an amendment there. Did you have something to add?
No, I just want to rush back to high school.
Okay, tell everyone be well, be safe. Thank you.
So far so good. We have a crew out there. City crew are assisting high school crew to a tree fell down unfortunate beyond the car. So we're trying to clean that up. So far so good, nothing that bad, but you never know. We will report back.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who's helping.
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to, let's see, item five. I will, I'd like to make a couple of comments first and I know Councilmember Buzajin also wanted to add some comments on this one. This is something that is part of what I hope becomes normal in our city, which we're a city that has no tolerance and no place for hate in our city and in our community. In the last two thousand twenty one, these reports and the, the staff report here indicates. And it's, it's a fact, there's no question, the highest rise of hate crimes and in twenty twenty one in nineteen years. And it seems you can turn on the TV, read the news or, or listen to the news each day and you hear something unfortunate, awful, unacceptable and hateful going on throughout Southern California. This is simple. It's, it's again, it is words, but hopefully we can do more than that. It's a resolution, the city council and the city of Calabasas condemning hate crimes and any other form of racism, religious or ethnic bias, discrimination, incitement of violence or targeting a minority. And anything we can think of as a council to help put a curb and put a stop to hate in our community. If we see it, if we can do anything about it, our youth are here. I know we're going to hear from them. They are leaders in their own right and they can teach us things that we can do better. And I know this council as a whole condemns hate, violence of rhetoric of any kind for any purpose whatsoever. It isn't just limited to one group or organization. So I appreciate my colleagues for allowing this to come forward. I'm glad to have worked with Mayor Tim Lintrop on this as well. It's very, very important that we speak up and have our voices heard. Councilmember Buzajin?
Yes, I had two comments. First, I hope that in the future we can go beyond just simply adopting as a report, the Los Angeles County report. I think it gets very political. The Los Angeles County Commission on Human Relations and is not a representative of a diverse diversity of thought and the breadth of crimes that occur throughout the state and the country. Also, in terms of something that's missing from this resolution is a great increase in lack of tolerance and inclusion of political expression. We have seen many incidents both here and nationally. Where people who espouse political views and someone disagrees with them, there's violence, there's a threat of violence. There's attacks, there's intimidation and bullying. I think that is just as important as some of these other categories and should be included in next year's resolution if we do one. And is, and some of these, of course, are related sometimes is a cross between race and political, you know, it, it sometimes includes many different categories. But I definitely want to see a statement next year involving free expression and people not being intimidated into saying how they feel about things without fear of reprisal.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Lintrop?
Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I think that this is just the start to what our community wants to do by making sure that everybody feels accepted. And just the way our city leads, we want to be an example and I think this is just the start. I know when Mayor Shapiro presented this to the mayor's youth council, they wanted to know what are we doing beyond just a document? So that's something that we should all work on. And I think this is just a start and I think our community does a great job being inclusive even through our social media posts by rep, by acknowledging different celebrations for different religions and groups, but this is just the start and I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you very much. Any other comments right now? If not, we have a public comment, public speakers. Both two members, proud members of the mayor's youth council and active Anthony Sherman and Daniel Permutter. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Daniel Permutter.
And I'm Anthony Sherman.
And yeah, we're both representatives from the mayor's youth council specifically for we're part of the cultural diversity subcommittee. And so you can imagine, we, we both have a pretty strong sense for everyone maintaining a healthy relationship and just inclusion of everyone in general. We want to spread the message of no hate. And we really want to continue our terms on the mayor's youth council, looking into more ways we can help you guys with this no hate. And some, some things we were thinking of specifically as, as different events come and go such as we were thinking about doing events, whether like with the school or with the city for Black History Month. Woman, Women's History Month, we know Ramadan just started and other specific holidays coming up, just to make sure everyone feels inclusive because we know the city is a pretty diverse place and includes many different people. And, and our first big project that we want to start work on, Anthony's gonna talk a little more on.
Yeah, so our first project was going to be a donation drive for the people of Ukraine sometime in the next couple of months because as we know, they're facing prejudice within their own borders with Russian invasion and I think this statement is really good. This resolution is really good statement that we do not support this unjust war and that we are we hardline our stance on why this is wrong and we support the communities that are here in Calabasas and we support the Ukrainians that live here. Including myself.
Yeah, so we basically just want to highlight the different cultures that are here in the city of Calabasas and we want to make sure everyone kind of feels part of the community because we know it's really diverse and we just hope to achieve like this goal over the course of our time on the mayor's youth council and we're, we really want to go into working with you guys to create certain solutions and we just want to keep up communications and hopefully come to different plans to carry this through. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there, Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
No, other members of the public.
Seeing them, may I have a motion to approve consent items one, two and five and six, if I got that right?
We'll second that.
It's been moving second and all in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed? No. Passes five zero and thank you very much.
I just make one point. I just want to thank the members of our mayor's youth council for being here tonight and for the programs that you're going to work on. The whole community will benefit from it. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you as well. Very much. Appreciate it. And we have a business person over there. Oh, sorry. Pardon me. We will move on to, keep going on to new business. Like we have the mid-year budget update and adoption. The year's twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and adoption of the resolution of appropriations. Number twenty twenty three, eighteen forty two, Ron Allers, our CFO, to make a presentation to council. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight is our annual mid-year budget review and it focuses just on a couple of funds. This year, the one that we usually focus on is the general fund. And I'll talk a little bit about revenue and expense trends. So our, and you'll see the table there on, on page two of the, of the report. So a number of our revenues have been trending up this year from what was originally budgeted. So property taxes is increasing by a little bit. Property tax is probably one of our most stable revenues here in the city. And while it does fluctuate a little bit from, from time to time due to market conditions, the way, the way it is with Prop thirteen in the state and assessed value. This revenue as a general trend is, is always upward. And so that one is just a slight increase. Sales tax continues to astound. And increased dramatically and you'll see here that we are, we are increasing it from seven point four million to eight point two million. And that's just based on the, on the trends. We are in a two-year run of dramatic increases in sales tax. Due to our, our retail base that we have here in the city mainly due to our, our transportation. So with that, we're increasing that to eight point two million. And my confidence level is very high that we will at least achieve that. It could be, it could be higher once the full year is said and done. Could be eight point three, could be, could be greater. T O T, which stands for transient occupancy tax, is increasing two hundred thousand as the council is well aware. The hotel called the Cambrian opened up about a year ago. And so this is reflecting the additional revenues from that hotel as well as increases in leisure travel. increases in leisure travel and, and in, in business travel that are occurring within the city as well as the rest of the state. Uh, U U T, which stands for utility users tax, for electric, gas and phone have both increased. We all have been experiencing uh our bills for electricity and natural gas. So that's the, the reason for those increases. And uh phone has stabilized after a few years of, of, of decreasing. This is uh the UT there is basically on landlines and, and cell phones. Um, our building fees have, are increasing from uh the estimate originally, and it's more in line which with what we have experienced the last couple of years. And then our V L F, which is an acronym for vehicle license fee. And this uh revenue is actually tied to our property tax revenue. So as our property tax revenue increases, this one basically mirrors uh that increase as a percentage. This one is just a slight increase of thirty-one thousand. We get this from, or the city receives this money directly from LA County. We receive half in January and half in May. So we know exactly the dollar amount that we are going to receive uh this year. We also have increases in our uh expense category. Again, we've all experienced uh different uh bills at our home, uh, and the city also, not only for natural gas and electricity, but for water, our landscaping services as, as well as other uh contract that the city has that have been increasing due to uh the higher than uh normal inflation that we are currently experiencing within uh the state and within uh the nation as well. Uh, all that being said, we are still looking at a, uh, having our revenues exceed our expenses for the general fund by about one point one million this current year. Our original budget estimate was a little over three hundred thousand that we were uh anticipating. And this will be higher. Uh, the main reason for it being higher is, is uh twofold. These increased revenues that I just went over and the city has uh ex, have been experiencing a number of staff turnovers, whether that be retirement or uh employees leaving. So uh, we do budget for full staff for the full twelve months. And when we don't have that full staffing level, we have salary savings and benefit savings from those, from those vacancies. Um, so that's our general fund outlook. Uh, we have a couple other uh changes that we're doing. One is in our, our transit fund and those are just to bring up um as we uh need additional uh money for either dial or ride or for our uh bus service. So you see the adjust, uh adjustments there as well as uh for our capital projects. Uh, we're adjusting the monies there as we're doing those uh projects and speeding them up. And then our tennis and swim center. Um, the one project that the council had authorized, the capital project for one million for the, for the pool, that's going to come in closer to the six hundred thousand dollar mark. The tennis and swim center uh needs work in other places, um, whether that be um in more major uh maintenance and other, and the tennis grounds. So we're asking council to not appropriate more money, but just to reallocate about four hundred thousand that was approved for the pool and put that for other portions of the tennis and, and swim center. You have the attached resolution of appropriation, which is a few pages long, which uh incorporates these changes to the revenue increases, incorporates uh the capital projects and the increases in tennis and swim and in the transit fund. And you have about a forty-page spreadsheet that details all the numbers and all the expenses and revenue in the general fund uh just as a reference and as a, as a point of, of you can uh, and this, and the public can research. But with that, I am finished with my report and I'm available to answer any questions that the council may have on our mid-year budget.
Are there any council comments? Ed?
Hey, Ron. Thank you for that report. Just curious what you have in mind for next year? Next fiscal, are there some to-do list items uh or some areas that you've, uh, I'd like to know if there are areas that you feel that maybe we need to be more transparent about? Um, or uh do a little bit differently?
Yeah, we are actually going to um hopefully start next week with a uh look at our general fund as far as trends that we're seeing and talk about next year's budget. And we'll mainly uh focus on, on the general fund. With that, we will be having uh expanding our budget document again this year. We'll uh expand more information regarding our capital projects. If you recall, we actually did for the first time a five-year capital improvement program uh this last year. So it will keep it at the five years, but we'll have more narrative for each one of the projects uh to go into more detail on what that project uh entails as well as more narrative words, if you will, instead of so many numbers uh in the budget document to explain our operations and our maintenance that we have for our various programs, whether that be at De Anza or Tennis and Swim or just general admin within the, uh, within the city or Public Works or, or whatever department. Uh, so we'll be including that and expanding our budget going forward.
Uh, one more thing, could you remind me um or the council, when is the software going to be in? And your training complete for that? So when are you going to be up and running?
Uh, we are, hopefully uh that will be in a, in a year plus. We're uh, we're almost uh getting, we're getting ready to sign the contract actually after it goes through our, our city process. And then we get put in a queue at the, at the vendor. Uh, and usually the queue can be a couple of months and then we'll start uh in earnest with the conversion of the, of the software.
And how long does that take?
Uh, the conversion, when I did that at Moore Park, we did, uh, we converted to this vendor, Tyler Incode. Uh, that took a year from when we started in earnest with it. And so I'm anticipating about twelve months. So if we can hopefully start by July, then we could considerably be live on July twenty twenty-four with the new software.
Thank you very much.
And Peter?
Sure. Uh, Ron, thank you very much for this. Um, I just wanted to uh go back to your summary sheet and point out, we had a budget surplus uh originally of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and we're now projecting a budget surplus of about one point one eight million. Um, and you talked about some of the reasons behind there, but I noticed in our actuals, we are uh actually in a negative one point nine million by the end of the year. Is that mostly because of the property taxes that come later on? Or why would you say that we're negative now and still projected to be one point one million over?
Right. So uh, we are, we are negative, which is the first six months of the fiscal year. And that's the way uh cities roll in California. So we receive not quite half of our property tax uh revenue uh by December thirty-first. We also do not receive any V L F money. So two point nine million comes in January and May. Our sales tax has a lag of three months. So by December, we pretty much only have one quarter out of four quarters in sales tax money. Uh, and that goes true for a few of the other revenues. For example, our franchise fees for uh electric and natural gas. We only receive that once a year and that comes uh by April fifteenth. So a lot of our revenue sources are back-ended into the six months. And even if you want to think of it on a cash basis, we bleed cash uh from July through about the end of March, right around now. And then we increase cash for three months of the year and then we bleed cash again.
Okay. And just one follow-up question to that. You mentioned sales tax is always lagging by three months or so. Uh, with that, wouldn't we be collecting the sales tax from the previous fiscal year in the beginning of this fiscal year and therefore we shouldn't really see a lag overall? Or is that just accounted for the money that we're receiving lagging from last year was already accounted for in last year's budget? That's why it shows up as a negative here?
You are correct, the latter explanation. So the, so the three years that is, I mean, the three months that is April, May and June, which we received by the end of August, that's captured in last fiscal year's budget.
Okay. And I do expect to receive my CPA by the end of my council term. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub.
Thank you. James?
Yes, thank you. Um, my only comment would be, I would like to see, and I guess I don't know if I'm addressing you or the bud, half of the budget committee that's here. Um, I'd like to see at least some proposals uh for how we could revise our uh law enforcement budget. And maybe uh some of the things I know have been in there so long, I don't even know if we're using those things. And we're maybe paying for services we don't really need. On the other hand, I would like to ultimately increase our law enforcement budget because I think we need to address certain things that have increased and spiked, such as residential burglaries and some of the significant traffic issues, traffic violations that have um just not gone away and just increased in volume in certain parts of the city. So maybe you could relook at that during the budget process, reallocate and uh hopefully increase a little bit in some of the problem areas.
Thank you. Do you want to comment?
Yeah, uh, Mayor Parton, if I could, uh, council member Buzajin, just yesterday, the city manager group met with Captain C two and contract law to start looking at um what is referred to as our five seven fives, the contract, how the, the deputies and other staff is allocated. Uh, that was a good meeting, but it was just a, a very high-level meeting. And so with that, um, Captain C two has uh helped facilitate a meeting with me and contract law to do a deeper dive into that and really understand each of those allocations through that five seven five to answer that question that you have.
Okay.
Thank you. And so I just wanted to add, I would also like you to look at the sheriff's contract and reallocating different things so that we can increase that contract. And a question, Ron, can you just elaborate on the Los Virginous Parking Authority and that decrease in the budget?
Yes, so that is specifically parking ticket revenue. So we did not uh do as much of that during uh the pandemic.
Now I think all of we're reinstating our parking restrictions. So I'm wondering, looking ahead, that number should go back?
Yes, it should return back to a more normal number. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And my only request is next time we do this, maybe we can have some visuals. So people watching on um at home or calling in just could see some of these slides. But thank you very much. Um, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, madam. Mayor Pretend.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt a resolution of appropriations, number twenty twenty-three dash eighteen forty-two.
I'll make that motion.
May I have? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to move on to informational reports, the check register for the period of February twenty-fifth through March tenth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions regarding the check register? With that, we'll move on. Are there any task force reports? I'll start with Ed and then move over.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. Uh, been a busy week for me, a couple of weeks. Um, Clean Power Alliance, uh, I'm really getting my feet wet on that a little bit. Uh, I'm scheduling a training class, which will help significantly, but um having solar in my house and being involved in it for many years, I'm excited to work with it uh on a citywide level. So I'll get back to you on the future of my learning on that. Um, also met with Mayor Pro Ten, we're on the Economic Development Committee. And I'm happy to say uh we're off to a very good start together. Uh, our cannabis poll that we requested to have done uh is in process. And uh, the vendor was selected and hopefully uh we'll have some results to report in the very, very near future. I'm excited to hear about what that's all about. Uh, they apparently have about a ninety percent success rate. And uh also exploring a variety of additional revenue opportunities, which will uh, uh, report to uh as we get further along. I met with uh David uh Mayor Shapiro. Uh, we're working on sustainability and uh we're really working hard to create a climate action plan that's doable one. Uh, putting a plan together is very expensive. I'm not sure if we want to spend all that money. We may implement or suggest to implement uh a plan from another city in California that's been very successful and put parts of it together in the meantime. Uh, but we're working very close uh together on that and maybe even exploring uh the possibility of a sustainability manager. Um, and lastly, Headwaters Corner, we had a, well, a conversation about that earlier. Uh, and I expect to reach a conclusion on that new lease and management agreement uh in the very near future.
Great. Peter, thanks, Ed.
Yeah, thank you, Ed. Um, let's see here, on March ninth, I was uh given the opportunity to tour the eight one eight hotel, which is a uh, uh, a temporary housing with wraparound services provided by LA uh, uh, I'm sorry, it's provided by.
LA Family Housing?
Lawson will be administering the intake of it, but uh, uh, gosh.
Ken Craft, the, the Hope, uh, not Hope of the Mission, yes.
Thank you. It takes a team here.
Going tomorrow.
Uh, Hope the Mission is a, is the uh person who is, is the entity who has built this and will be maintaining it and running it. Uh, it's a great facility and it's a design for uh women experiencing homelessness that have at least one or more child under the age of eighteen. So it's really focused on keeping the family unit together in a safe location. Um, great, uh, great entity, great, great mission there. Uh, I also met with the, the Los Virginous Municipal Water District on March fifteenth. Uh, we were really focused on legislation uh that is going to affect our uh water uh here in Calabasas. Uh, they were able to give me a lot of great insight as to what was going on. Uh, because on the seventeenth, I met with the League of California Cities Transportation Communication and Public Works Committee. And we were discussing a number of bills. And in particular, took a position to support with amendments for S B six thirty-eight, A B fifteen sixty-seven and S B eight sixty-seven, all of which are uh measures that include funding for water projects, water infrastructure. And two of those also include significant amounts of money for uh, uh, fire resiliency and sustainability. So uh, some great stuff coming through the California legislature that we're tracking and supporting. On the eighteenth, I was at the Arbor Day uh celebration with many of my fellow council members. And uh, the twenty-first, I was able to attend the interfaith meeting with the Sheriff's Department, uh, great turnout. Interesting that our communities of faith, um, you know, these are organizations that have large bodies of people and invite the public in, anybody is welcome. So it's obviously a, an area where uh, security could be an issue and uh great advice and collaboration with our Sheriff's Department. Thank you very much for that. Um, and that's all I have for now.
Great. Thank you. James?
Yes, I attended many uh meetings and events with the California Contract Cities Association, the League of California Cities. Won't go into all of them. I did want to announce that I've already told the council via memorandum that uh rates for, for contract services with the Sheriff's Department will be increasing in the next fiscal year, seven point six three percent. In addition, the liability trust fund amount, which is cumulative, will be one percent. And that means if we keep the contract as is, it'll be close to a five hundred thousand dollar increase just for that. Um, I did have a question about some future agenda items, Kendon. Um, at the beginning of the year, I was asked to have some discussion about airport noise. Um, is that coming up soon or what, what is that?
And I'll go, do you want to wait till we do future agenda items?
Oh, yeah, uh, well, yes, okay. Um, yes, I'm sorry, that I, I kind of mix them together.
Do you have any more?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay, I'll give my uh task force reports. We had a, our cog meeting yesterday and Senator Ben Allen attended. He talked about Senate Bill five seven, five seventy-one, which has to do with wildfire evacuation planning. So that's something that we'll monitor and if passed, how that would impact Calabasas. We also had Councilmember Buzajian attend our cog meeting to give a report similar to what he just discussed, which we were all very grateful for. So we'll continue to provide updates on that legislation. We had, as Ed mentioned, a very successful economic development meeting. And I also attended the clergy meeting at the Lost Hill Sheriff Station. And it was a wonderful opportunity for council members from the different cities to hear the issues impacting our um places of worship in terms of their concerns about security and just no matter what faith they were, they all shared that concern. So. So, um, it's really admirable how much focus that the Sheriff's Station um, is given to this. And you know, as residents, we know how lucky we are to have the Lost Hill Sheriff Station, but I could tell at that meeting that our houses of worship also felt the same way. So, it was a great meeting. I look forward to continuing that. So, now we will move on to any requests for future agenda items and I'll start with James.
Okay. So, the airport issue.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Uh, one of the things that we're trying to work on and, and kudos to Mari as our city clerk. We, what you'll be seeing in either the next agenda or perhaps the one after that is a revised future agenda um, uh, sheet in the, in the packet. And that will look at three meetings ahead. So, we're trying to look at three meetings ahead and program what will be coming up on discussion items for the council three meetings ahead. With that, it also gives us a chance to start prioritizing some of these future agenda items. As it now stands, we have twenty-seven items on the future agenda list and uh, what we don't have is um, uh, clarity really on how those should be prioritized. And so, staff has been talking about that and we might be coming back to council to, to get a, a game plan in place on how to prioritize those twenty-seven items.
Uh, next, this may not need to come back to the council, but as we move forward with the community center renovations, I'd like staff to consider um, having some kind of uh, I don't know if I'd call it an event, but for example, when the, when the roof repairs start, maybe some kind of community gathering there, you know, get, build up some interest in the commu- uh, from the community in the reopening of the center. Um, it, I also would like uh, if possible, when, when the rainy season is over, a complete uh, damage assessment as to how much damage was suffered in the city and where it was. I think that'd be very helpful to all of us. And this would include, you know, a number of trees that fell as a result perhaps that we know of. Uh, number, uh, you know, property damage, number of homes that had to be uh, that were damaged or had to be abandoned or et cetera, et cetera. Include, not, not just city property either, just whatever we know of. Um, and finally, um, I'm hoping this year that we can bring back our uh, creek cleanup event. I, I, it was really a nice community event. It was outdoors and it was one of the first things we brought back after the pandemic and then we didn't do it last year. So, hopefully we can do it again this year.
Thank you. Peter?
Yes, I'd like to see if our council would like to introduce a legislative policy for our city so that uh, when issues come up such as wildfire evacuation uh, issues and such, uh, that uh, we can individually speak on behalf of the council. Uh, this would enable members of uh, our, our council who are on COG to vote confidently on items with short notice if we had a legislative policy that outlined what our primary goals were as a city. Uh, something that Agora Hills has recently done and I think it'd be a great idea for us to do that.
So, I actually had requested that as a future agenda item and I was going to follow back up because the COG wants each city to be able to vote and we don't have that ability right now. So.
So, maybe that's one of our twenty-seven then.
I think it's, it's already on there and Kendon and I
All right. Thank you.
spoken about that, but we need to make sure that that comes back.
I have no other.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, city managers' report?
Um, just one item on this on that. Uh, so with um, this procedurally, we have uh, Councilmember Bazagian has requested a couple, uh, three different items to add to future agenda. Just making sure there's a second on that or just a, a consensus from the council to add those.
Well, they weren't all to come back here. Only the airport one. The other ones don't have to be agendas.
Oh, so the damage assessment is just uh?
I don't think we need to, I mean, that can be. Unless you
Just a memo or something.
It's only a significant activities report unless somebody wants to hear.
No, I, I concur. I would second his first item as a uh, future agenda item and the other two I would uh, give concurrence with, that they can just be done.
Okay. And then no other items to report. Thank you.
Great. So, we will now adjourn the city council meeting to a special meeting scheduled next Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. We are adjourned.
Thank you.